I'd like to welcome you to tonight's debate between Republican candidates for the primary election for the state school board, District 13. We want to thank all of you for your attendance tonight, both those of you in person here, as well as virtually, as well as those who will be watching later on demand at a later date. My name is Jay Evenson. I'm the opinion editor at the Deseret News. I will be your moderator this evening. We would like to thank our partners, The United Way, the Hinckley Institute of Politics at the University of Utah, the Sutherland Institute, the Utah PTA, the Utah Association of Public Charter Schools, and the Deseret News. Our candidates this evening are the incumbent Randy Booth and the challenger Carrie Bartholomew. The debate will proceed as follows. We will have 60-second opening statements by each candidate. Following that, I will pose a series of questions, and I'll do that in alternating order. Each candidate will be given 90 seconds to respond, and if requested, I will allow a 30-second follow-up response. The candidates have not been briefed on these questions ahead of time. We do have a timekeeper, Leah, if you want to raise your hand, and she will hold up warning signs letting you know how much time is left. We'll try, we want to stick within those time limits. If you're in the middle of a sentence, I'll let you finish your sentence, okay? But not if it just goes on and on and on. All right. That's the first half hour. Now, the second half hour, we're going to have audience questions, both of those of you who are here in person and those of you who are watching online. If you are online, you will need to post those questions to the chat function on YouTube, and we have someone here who will be collecting those and texting them to me. So we will hopefully have enough to fill up the whole hour. We're beginning at 20 minutes after the hour, so we will go until 20 minutes after 8:00. Make sure we have the full hour. Before this debate, we, I met privately with our candidates, and we flipped a coin, and Carrie will begin with the first opening statement, and you have 60 seconds.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Carrie Bartholomew. Can we not?
Is it in my speaker?
Try now.
Everybody turn their speakers all the way up, and I'll control your microphones.
Okay.
Am I good now? Okay, great. Hi, my name is Carrie Bartholomew. I am a mother, a para educator, a substitute teacher. I work for co-ops. I am running because I believe that our children need to see change. Over and over again, I'm watching kids who are being demoralized and kind of feeling hopeless, and I would like to bring the hope and the joy back into education for both our teachers and our students. I believe in academic excellence, and I don't think that we should be teaching anyone in any way that they are marginalized or that they are victimized. So instead, what I would like to see is a place that is full of encouragement, that is uplifting for all of our children, that we can get back on being highly rated academically, and that we can teach real, true facts about history. My background also is that I grew up in the foster system, so when it comes to treating people like they're victims, it's not something that I'm okay with. We can rise above. Thank you.
Time. Thank you very much. Randy?
I'm Randy Booth, and I love public education. I've been involved in it for a lot of years, 43 years on the faculty at BYU. I loved my students, traveled with them around the world, 45 different countries, and been able to share some wonderful teaching experiences with those students. 16 years on school boards, Board of Directors of the M-Tech, working the last four years on the state school board, a wonderful opportunity. I have loved it. I've been able to serve as the Chair of Academic Standards and Assessment and Vice Chair of Law and Licensing for the first two years. Those experiences have led me to three priorities. They are, first of all, school safety, parent-teacher engagement, and academic excellence. I invite you to join me in that experience of pursuing those three goals in future years, and I certainly thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The first question here is going to be something rather general, but please tell us, what will be your guiding principles for decision-making as a member of the State Board of Education? We'll begin with Randy.
It's been my opportunity to serve on a board for the last 20 years, and in all of those experiences, I have found that the parent-teacher relationship, the parent-board relationship is important, and I have gone out of my way and continue to foster those bridges and those relationships so that the parents, who understand their children the best, have the opportunity to give us important feedback that will help us arrive at good decisions and best practices to ensure that every child is having the very best educational journey possible.
Thank you. Carrie?
Sure. I bring to the board a mother's heart. I listen to people. There have been so many people in our district who have reached out to me as their advocate. I take their concerns to people who will listen, which often is not our actual school board member. I listen to teachers the same way. Teachers come to me and they say, "We have these problems." Parent-teacher relationships are suffering. There are many, many teachers who do not feel respected by their, by the parents, and there are many parents who are villainized, who are called names like crazy. So we have some real problems that need to be fixed, and I believe that what I bring to the table is an ability to talk to people on both sides, to bring them, because I am both a parent currently and also an educator. I work with people in all charter, public, and homeschool situations.
Thank you. We'll move on here. So recently, the State Board of Education decided that questions about restrooms and gender should be left up to individual schools to decide on a case-by-case basis. Do you agree with this decision? We'll begin with Carrie.
I absolutely do not agree with this decision. I think that we're living in a world right now where we are being told to swallow lies. I think that's very hard for our children, especially those children who get caught up in things like TikTok or get caught up in social justice, gender-type initiatives, and a few years later decide that maybe that wasn't the direction they wanted to go to. I do not believe we can have the conversations about what bathroom you should go into without letting our children know the amount of people who detransition. This is real, it's an absolute fact, and it needs to be addressed. Our girls need to be safe in the bathrooms. Our female girls need to be safe in the bathrooms. That is probably the most, to me, that's very much common sense.
Thank you. Randy?
I am completely in agreement with the fact that our children need to be safe. Girls need to be safe, boys need to be safe, they all need to have privacy. Teachers, people that are coming into our schools, we need privacy. And I also believe that local leaders of education want that same kind of privacy for children. I believe parents, I think we're all on the same page, and I think we've got to cooperate together. I think that it is a local responsibility to ensure that there is privacy available for every child, and for anybody else that's needing the use of a restroom. We've just got to, in this day and age, be very much aware that this is an issue that could cause people to be uncomfortable in their environment, and I want that comfort level to be available to anyone who has to access restrooms in our facilities.
What does equity mean to you and what does it not mean?
Equity is one of the words, there are many of them, that have been removed from our vocabulary in terms of being able to use them the way we've used them for decades. And I have a problem with people taking away my vocabulary, words, but in terms of equity, I believe that every child deserves equal opportunity. It doesn't matter where they come from, what their background may be. I've had opportunities to experience children all over the world. They are similar in that they all have basic needs, and we, as adults in the room, can work hard to provide those opportunities so that every child can reach their fullest potential, that they are seen, they are heard, and they are being recognized as someone who has value. And I have committed myself and those who have worked with me for many, many years to make sure that every child has a chance. We begin where they are, we give them equal opportunities, and we do everything we can to open doors of opportunity for every child. As parents are working with us, as educators are working with us, that is our common goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
Regardless of how we see equity, equity by definition is equal outcomes. So what we're seeing is a lot of higher programs, merit-based programs, going away in the terms of trying to make sure that everyone has an equal outcome. Equal outcomes, get rid of a person's ability or desire to achieve more. The competitive nature is gone. We see a lot of miserable kids. We see a lot of kids who do not even care. I know someone today who did not care to graduate because they just thought, "What matters here?" I've been in classrooms with kids where they just sit on their phones staring at themselves, and they don't, they don't care to get involved because there isn't passion in what they're doing. So equity tends to remove the passion. Let's talk about equity on another level, equity on the caucus system. Equity, do we have equal outcomes when somebody can pay their way to be elected? That is another issue with equity. Do we get equal outcomes? Do we really want to fix that bar and make it so that people who wouldn't normally have an opportunity have an opportunity, or do we take what we want but use words that are just kind of performative instead?
Again, polite, just polite applause, please, but we don't want to have to, we have, we have a lot of questions we want to be able to get to. Public education in Utah is on the edge of what might be, if voters choose in November, dramatic changes in funding sources, moving away from our income tax and more towards general fund and sales tax. Do you believe that education is adequately funded in Utah, and what is your position concerning this change? Begin with Carrie.
Sure. I would like to see, I believe in, I believe in school choice. So what I would like to see is the money follow the child. However, the string is attached to become a problem, so is public education funded well? I think that there are a lot of places where we send our money that they don't need to be going into. DEI programs and K-12, SEL programs, these are places that we do not need to be sending our money. We can apply common sense and not have to spend our money there. There's a lot of computer programs that we don't even know what's on them when we see them in the classroom, and then all of a sudden you're like, "Oh," a parent says, "My child was just taught X, and I'm not okay with it," and the teacher says, "I don't know what you're talking about," because with the Chromebook, we don't see. So we're spending money probably in places where we don't need to be spending that money when we could rather fund maybe school supplies so that teachers don't have to fund their own classrooms. There are other things that we can do with the money that we have to be more responsible with it, but at the same time, I do believe in school choice.
Thank you. Randy?
You know, this is a difficult area. I've been working on school boards for 20 years trying to secure adequate funding, and there have certainly been some improvements. We are better off than we were, but we certainly are not well-funded in terms of the needs of every individual child. I look at particularly some rural schools and some of the challenges that they have. I look at special ed. I look at so many programs that are underfunded, and yet the remarkable teachers and volunteer parents in our communities roll up their shirt sleeves and go to work and make the magic happen. And Utah schools continue to be very positive schools. When you look at the national averages, you look at the U.S. News and World Report suggesting that education is top, the top of the nation is in Utah, and I'm going, "Oh, my gosh." And look what we're doing it with, with the number of dollars that we're spending. It's amazing. And I know that resources are limited, so we must, as Carrie said, find ways to be very efficient, but we've also got to protect the funds that have been set aside for public education use and not be diverting them to all of the other really good uses that they can come up with. We've got to protect those children, and whether they're having school choice or whether it's going directly into the public schools, we need those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay? Yes, if you'd like, 30 seconds?
Sure. Just, just on the point about where our schools are today, we saw proficiency rates just this week come out, that our schools in literature, science, and math are only at 30 percent, so it's not really something to brag about. We can do better. Our kids are not excelling, and we can excel. A lot of that is taking away a lot of this DEI initiative-type stuff and instead focusing on academics for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
30 seconds again for response.
We need to be very careful when we are looking at comparisons in scores, because the legislature has set our scores high enough, and we are trying to push higher, so we're not comparing apples and apples. We're comparing with other states, apples and oranges, so we've got to make sure that we're looking at what is really happening with the assessments and how they compare. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Let's go back to another, there's noise there. Okay, let's move on to another culture war issue here. State law requires parents to be notified if their child wishes to use different pronouns or to identify as a different gender at school. Some say this might jeopardize their safety at home. What is your position on this? Start with, I believe it's, Randy?
Our state superintendent has taken a very firm stand, instructing all teachers throughout the state that this is not something that, that we're going to be doing in the schoolroom and in individual classes, and so I feel very comfortable with that instruction from the superintendent and, and feel that it's not something that we need to be spending our, our time on.
Thank you. Carrie?
I appreciate that that law or that the superintendent has, has made that declaration, but I also know that it's not, it's not happening. There are, there are students who feel like they are, they are overwhelmed with the pressure to, to comply with whatever social thing that a teacher might bring upon them, and I think that we, we should not be doing that. I think that, I think that the whole pronoun thing is far more in-depth than people, than the general public understands it to be, but I do think that we just have to have general respect and general, just a following, like we need to, we need to obey what, what the parents want.
Thank you.
Yep.
And speaking of parents and that, tensions naturally exist among various levels of educational governance, and whether an issue should be handled in a top-down or a bottom-up approach. Please tell us generally which issues, standards, or curricula should be addressed at the state board level versus the local district level versus the school or teacher level or even the parental level? Begin with you, Carrie.
Sure. I believe the role of a state school board person, especially in today's, in today's climate, is to be very informed, to be very knowledgeable. As Mr. Booth has said, there's lots of times that, that words get taken, so you will believe that you are implementing something that's really great, wonderful, it's going to inspire and encourage. Take something like wit and wisdom curriculum, but that curriculum actually underneath tends to, and there have been studies, show that it makes our children more depressed. So I think that as a state school board member, your job should be to be informed enough that you're making sure that none of that stuff is getting through at the standard level, so that way, when it comes to the local level and they're making their decisions, they have very clear standards of, "This cannot come into my classroom. This can, this cannot," I'm sorry, "this cannot come into our district." And then for the teachers, the same thing, but the, but the school board originally needs to make, set the standards. They need to understand, they need to be so informed that none of this garbage is coming into the classroom and affecting our children's mental health.
Thank you.
I'm grateful to have served on academic standards committees for the last decade. I've spent hundreds upon hundreds of hours with parents, with teachers, with writing committees, with people with doctorates in whatever content area from all of the universities across the state and across the nation, as we brought in consultants. And all of those people have contributed great ideas, but I have to say that we have listened very clearly to parents that have been on those writing committees, that have given us input, and many of you have been a part of that input, and we will continue to try to set very strong standards that will then be implemented at the district level with the curriculum that they choose, and parents will continue to have input, and local districts will continue to make sure that what is being taught, the instructional materials are not only suitable but are especially effective in teaching the standards that have been adopted and approved after immense effort to involve as many possible good minds as possible to help our children succeed in today's world.
Can I hear that?
Yes, 30 seconds.
My issue is who we're calling the experts. Many, many times, those experts turn out to be grifters, turn out to be people who, the parents, when you talk about parents, my experience has been, as somebody who has called you myself, my experience has been, some of us are irrelevant. If we don't have expert in front of the title, then it's a problem. And so that whole expert thing needs to be proven, not just somebody who has a degree from such and such and whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you. 30 seconds?
Yeah. I fully agree that the experts need to be experts, and I, I would like to know which parents have felt that I did not listen to them, because I have listened, and I have spoken to people, I have never turned them away, I have never said, "You don't know what you're talking about." To that person, as I've talked with them, I have always listened and brought their ideas to the table.
Thank you. Let's move on. What should be the goal with testing? Is the state accomplishing these goals adequately, and is it a good thing that parents can opt their children out of tests?
Parents have the option to opt their kids out, that's their right. Of course it is. They're kids, they know they're kids. It does impact our scores, because some of the very best kids are opting out, and so the overall state scores are going to reflect a lot of smart kids that are not a part of the mix, and it would be great if we could have all those smart kids helping us make everybody feel better about what's happening in the classroom, because lots of great things are happening in the classroom. Assessments are expensive, difficult, but boy, are we spending a lot of effort and time and getting a lot of input from parents and teachers to try to improve what is currently happening in the schools. I don't want to overtest. I do want to test so that we have the data that we require to help each of our students make the progress that they are entitled to make.
Thank you. Carrie?
I think that there is time and a place for testing. I totally support parents being able to opt out. Testing is only a small part of the pie on how well a child does in school. Some children have anxiety and they don't do well in the test, but they do very well in other, other ways within the classroom. So I think that testing, it does give you, and especially if your child is heading towards a college, college or something, that it helps them, helps you know where your child is and where they're placing. My concern about testing and why a lot of people are opting out is because you shouldn't be opening up a math test and having a dropdown on all of your pronouns and things like this that should not be as part of our regular testing. We should be, if our tests were academic, if our tests were, were sticking straight to the, then I would support it 100 percent, but the reason people are backing out is because the questions are invasive.
The state board's vision is, quote, "Upon completion, all Utah students are prepared to succeed and lead by having the knowledge and skills to learn, engage civically, and lead meaningful lives," end quote. Do you agree with this vision, or would you want to see another? Carrie?
I would love to agree with this vision, but that's not what I'm seeing. I'm seeing kids that are leaving demoralized, I'm seeing kids that are not ready for, they're fragile, they're not ready for the workforce. They are going into school and they are being told, "Let's focus on your social and emotional health," all the time. Teachers, when I've subbed, I've had people come in and, and show me, "I can leave the classroom any reason because of my anxiety." We are coddling kids instead of giving them the steps that they need to be able to be productive members in society. So we need to have kids who are able to think, and I don't want to say critically, because that word has been hijacked, so we need kids who are able to think analytically. We need kids who are able to compete in that world outside, and our kids, in many cases, aren't. Yes, there are exceptions. There are kids who are thriving, but in many cases, they aren't. Their senior year, some of these kids are going and they're working at Walmart, and they go to one class in school. That is, that is not expecting excellence from our kids. We should be lifting them up until the very second that we let them go.
Thank you. Want to go?
So I would have to say that I see students differently. There are certainly students, and I love to take students individually because they're all in different places, but there are many who are succeeding and who are happy and who are excelling and who are ready to meet any challenge, whether it's a new job as a welder, because they went through a wonderful M-Tech program as they approached the end of their graduate, their senior year in high school, and they're going to start a job at $80,000 a year with wonderful certifications. There are other kids that are college-bound, they did well on their ACT scores, they are excited, there are many that are learning durable skills along with excellent academic skills. There are so many kids that are happy, that are excited about life, and the ones that are not, I'm concerned for them, and I want to help them. I want to figure out, what are we doing as parents, as teachers, as community leaders to help those that may not be finding their way? I love kids, as I know you do, but to say generally that I see kids doing this, and I'm sure we do, but let's not ignore all the kids that are doing such wonderful things and the amazing teachers that are knocking themselves out with a classroom of kids, that everyone is different and they need individual attention, and they're getting it.
Many ideas have been presented for the future of the State Board of Education, from having its members appointed by the governor to changing the number of board members, or has, some have suggested eliminating the board entirely and relying on a superintendent only. How do you think the board should be structured? Should it remain as is, or should there be changes? Randy?
There's no question that we need to have some changes, and I would say among the most important changes is we have got to find ways to bridge, to build bridges between parents and parents who also happen to be school board members or grandparents. And I know in some minds, it's a problem that we grandparents are so concerned about children because it really is the job of the parents, and I recognize that that is very important, but I have just as much interest in my grandkids as I did in my children, and I'm going to keep working for them and knocking myself out and involving other parents -- and grandparents in that process so that together, we can find solutions. To lose that parent input and leave it with only a superintendency, I think would be a big mistake. Because no matter how much you say the school board is not listening to parents, we are. There are hundreds of hours of listening going on. And hundreds of emails that are all being read. We may not have time to respond to 800 emails I got in one week, but we listened and we reflected what we heard in the meetings and in the discussions that ensued.
Thank you. Carrie.
I think that our, we must continue to have elected officials. We cannot have them appointed. When we have them appointed, we have haves and have-nots. We have people who are, who are elected because they think the right and the correct ways. There's a correct way of being. We have a lot of, of educational, I would say educational arrogance, where you don't get to have a voice if you don't have a certain degree behind your name. 52% of Utahns do not have college degrees. And they shouldn't be called crazy or referred to as, as less than because they have just as much heart and just as much love for their children as the people sitting on the board. They have just as much desire for their children to rise above and they want to be heard, they deserve to be heard. The parents who are standing up for things that they believe are truly harming their children, so what we have is kind of a colonization. We have a, we know best, you will follow what we want, that's the way it goes. And if you're in that category, we will listen to you. But if you're not, we're going to write you off as being insignificant and maybe even extremist.
I'm speechless. Because I think it's so remarkable that we could be in this kind of a situation where parents are being put at odds with one another like this. I really believe that we've got to listen to each other. And to say that those of us who are on one side are arrogant because we have a college degree, I, I have not had that experience. And I could find a whole bunch of parents that could come and testify to you that we have listened and we have talked and we've been interested in what you have, you know, what have you expressed? What are your concerns? How can we help solve the problems? Thank you.
Yeah, that's not what I said. I didn't say that because you have a college degree, you're arrogant. I said that some people with college degrees are arrogant. There is a huge difference there.
Thank you.
All right. Folks, we have, we have reached the halfway point. That was quick. We'll now open this up for questions. And we'll start with the, the group of people who are here. You've, you've taken the time to drive here and, and be here. So if we, if someone would like to raise their hand and ask a question, I think you were first, the ma'am back in the books.
Yes, thank you. My question is about local control and what that means to you. So I just sent you an email about the 24 explicit titles that are, that are needed by the school district of books. And I asked if parents could be notified because the school wasn't taking it out so they could protect their own children. And your response was a trust in administrators. When I wanted parents to make that decision for their own child, a trust in administrators and local control. And so my question is, if there's a state law, the elias and districts are sovereign to state law. And they are not the ones who determine if they follow state law or not. So I was hoping you would explain to me what you meant by local control when the issue to me seems like they're just not following the law.
All right. So the question is concerning local control and, and books that are offensive or not appro, not age, certainly not age appropriate.
Yeah, I think it should be legality. So I wanted to know what you meant by local control and how, how Carrie also sees local control, you know, differentiating between law.
Thank you. And I think we're actually, it's actually Carrie's turn to answer first.
Sure. Okay. I think that when we, which often happens with the, with the school board, you take a problem to the local school board and they say, oh, that's the state school board's decision. And then you take it to the state school board and they say, oh, that's the local. And it kind of seems like it's really kick the can and it's an excuse instead of just dealing with it. So what happens then is that legislatures get involved, which I've been involved with many of them because they come and they say, what's going on, Carrie? And I try to explain it to them and I, and I work and I make the public comments with these legislators who I have very strong relationships with. But the thing is, is that when they have to make that decision, it's, it is a vote of no confidence in our local and their state's school boards.
Thank you. Randy?
When I responded, I was hoping that we could get a report from those who have the responsibility at the local level to carry out what the legislature has laid before them. So that I wasn't taking back a responsibility that had been firmly placed in the local area, but we were asking them to step up to the plate and be compliant with the law. Which I then, as I mentioned to you in my email, I sent that information, your information, and copies of everything that we have at the state board level to the district top person, assistant superintendent responsible for libraries, for sensitive materials, for all of the reviews that are taking place. And those people then responded back to me, where you copied on her, on Suzanne Kimball's response to me. And she explained that, yes, you are correct in all of these, but these certain books. So she gave me a full report on everything that you gave me. And I have been looking, waiting to hear back, which I heard from you today, waiting back so that we could reconnect and I could give you a report on what they had to say. But I feel that there are so many children, I'm sorry, I can't finish the answer because I'm out of time. But I'm happy to talk with you afterwards and let you know that local areas have got to do this to protect our kids. There's too many local for one little group of people in Salt Lake City to make sure that we protect our kids all over. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to take a question here from someone online who wants to know, what is your stance on SEL and how it's incorporated into most subjects? Begin with Randy.
Social emotional learning has been going on for decades and decades. Not the social emotional learning that is transformative and the social emotional learning that has now become a hot button topic and something that is very dangerous for our kids. When it comes to certain things that we're teaching children in terms of respect and standing in line and taking your turn and being a good sport and all of those kinds of things and, and how to have a happy disposition and make the best of a tough situation and I can do hard things, those things are just part of character and part of things that you learn as you interact with other kids and you play on the playground and you have good teachers who care. I believe in all of that kind of wonderful positive reinforcement, helping one another figure out how to live with one another and interact with one another. But transformative SEL does not belong in the public schools. And parents need to keep making certain that those kinds of things are not getting in the way of the education of their children.
Thank you. Carrie.
Well, I would agree with that. But Tim Schreiber comes out here and speaks to teachers often. Tim Schreiber is the head of Castle. Castle is transformative SEL. If you go to Castle's website and you type in equity, you will find out what the overall objectives of SEL are. Utah is rife with SEL. Disagree Better is SEL. So SEL, social and emotional learning, is really social, social and emotional compliance. And when you really get down to what is SEL, SEL is hate craft. SEL is teaching our children to center around some at the exclusion of others. The exclusion of others is first maybe the white male. And then it begins to go more and more and more, divided, divided, divided. And it's really teaching our children to hate. This is why I cannot support it. I love the regular teaching our children how to be kind and loving and, and accepting of each other. I love that. But that's not what SEL is. And as long as Tim Schreiber is coming and talking to our teachers, we have a problem.
Let's go to another question here. Gentleman right here.
The topic of educational funding came up earlier and the, the wobegone concept that it was falling short. I'm a substitute teacher for 10 years. My son is a high school principal in Alpine School District of a huge high school. In my opinion, funding is not short. There's plenty of it. The problem is the mismanagement of it and the waste is epic. And that is an understatement. It has to be fixed. We don't need more funding. We need more management and attention to the money that's available. Change my mind.
So you're, okay, so your question is then, if, if there is waste and mismanagement and how should you address that?
I can't change your mind. I completely agree.
We are, we are surrounded by good administrators. So if there is incredible waste, have you talked with those administrators?
Absolutely. And I've seen it, day after day.
And, and what do they say?
They say, they basically give it a pass. It is something that doesn't concern them. In fact, my son at the high school says, if you don't use it, you lose it. That's what they say. And it is ubiquitous.
Well, I'm living in a world where we're trying hard to see where the dollars are being spent and where we can find dollars that are being misspent that can be redirected to critical issues like academic excellence and like higher teacher pay and like school supplies and a lot of other hot button needs that we hear from teachers and from parents and we see ourselves. So when there's waste, I would love for those parents to say, here's some waste, so, and let us know so we can go down there and talk with those administrators and see if they would like to share some of that waste with some more, some things that we might feel would be a better use of those funds.
Thank you. I'm going to go online here one more time. Do you feel the things like Safe UT and certain school groups are promoting a lifestyle in schools that is appropriate for all children? Does that make sense?
Safe UT.
Safe, yeah, all right. Randy, I think it's your turn to go first. Things like Safe UT and, and certain school groups are promoting a lifestyle. Have we already gone through that? All right.
Safe UT.
Safe UT.
We just have app for suicide and things like that.
Okay.
Do you think it's appropriate for all children?
I would say that, no. I think that many of those issues need to be dealt with by parents in the home. But they need to be supported, pardon me.
They're promoted in schools.
They're promoted in schools.
Let's have the candidates answer and not so much back and forth. It can get, it can get out of hand.
I apologize. I kind of invited that. Sorry. There's no question that we have got to be very careful about what we are promoting because there are a lot of third-party entities out there who are great. And if it's something that is very valuable for students, then we ought to promote it. But if there's things that are questionable, somebody's got to vet that. So the question is, who's vetting it so that things that are not appropriate are going to be getting out to, are not going to be getting out to the students? And then we're having to repair and, and, and backtrack in areas that we don't have time to even accomplish all that we need to accomplish with kids.
Thank you. Carrie.
Right. So Safe UT app was created to, to help kids who are, have suicidal ideation. And so for that reason, people felt that, you know, that this was needed. One of my big concerns about it was that it said that, that they were being told to share it with your siblings, but don't share it with your parents. That was one of the main concerns about this. Now, we know that suicidal ideation, it pulls you into the whole mental health thing, the whole mental health complex. And the mental health complex in our schools, mental health does not belong in our schools. Mental health clubs that have kids playing at being therapists does not belong at our schools. There are children who really do have mental health issues and they need those to be met, not, it's not the school's purview.
Thank you. The gentleman right back here has had his hand up for a while.
Thanks to both of you. Karani, I want to read a comment that Carrie, you have on your side, but I'd like you to both respond to it. You said, "I'm a proponent of school choice as long as the steps are taken to prevent government regulation." And you also kind of mentioned on that that you'd like to see something with no strings attached.
Right.
I have some concerns about that, given that when we talk about the government, I go back to our founding documents, the government is really we, the people. It's a republic and we, we elect our government officials, much as you said for the school board, we should do that. When we're talking about no strings attached, what is there to prevent there from being fraud and abuse? What's there to prevent someone who says, takes this money for choice and may use it in ways that we don't understand? I have great concerns. I realize that not all of us have children in school. I, I do, one right here who's in school, I have a daughter who's graduated. But I, I have, and I'll continue to pay money for taxes to support our schools after my children grow up. But I, as a taxpayer, want to see that accountability. And, and I kind of would like you both to speak to what you mean.
Can you read what I said again?
You said, "I'm a proponent of school choice as long as the steps are taken to prevent government regulation."
I didn't say overreach.
It says government regulation.
Okay. Well, what I meant was overreach. And so, so regulation at a certain, is it even my turn?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay. So, so what I mean by overreach is I feel like the government that we have right now is not serving we, the people. The government that we have right now is, is saying that it doesn't matter what your beliefs are, you will do what we tell you to. I see a lot of authoritarianism in our government today. And so those are the things that when I'm saying, I don't want those to come into the homeschool situation. I don't want, when I'm teaching my son about the Constitution, I don't want these newfound whatever things that the, that the federal government says that we must now be teaching our children that I fundamentally don't agree with. The idea of, of having my child forced to be fundamentally transformed, which is again SEL, but having our children fundamentally transformed is something that I don't, they have no right to do, in my opinion. So that's what I mean when I say strings attached. I mean, let's get the government in its purview and let the family raise their children.
Thank you. Randy?
Well, I think the question is, is a financial, a fiscal question. I believe in accountability. And when I hear that mismanagement is taking place, my feelers all go up and it's like, okay, where? Let me see this. We have got to get to the bottom of this because we don't have enough resources for the state of Utah to do everything that's got to be done. And if there's waste, there has got to be accountability. There have got to be, and my experience on the school board is that we have business managers, we have auditors, we have people in each school that are really being careful. I, I'm, maybe I am a Pollyanna, but I have experienced honest, hardworking, committed financial people. And I'm here to tell you that Scott Jones at the state board level, he is working way overtime to give us accurate information. And if he sees any hint of, of people mismanaging funds, that's it. We're stopping, we're, we're going back to point zero and trying to figure out what's wrong because we've got to be accountable with those funds.
Thank you. Let's go online again here. Give an example of how you've worked with others to accomplish an important policy. You're going to be, you're, you're running to be a member of a board and that takes cooperation and effort in order to get things done. Randy, we begin with you.
You know, I don't think we need quite as many new laws every year in education. I think that many things can be solved at a lower, at a local level. For example, there is a wonderful woman by the name of Lissandra Harker in the Provo School District. And Lissandra is a mother who has a daughter who doesn't have enough time to And Lissandra is a mother who has a daughter who doesn't have enough time to eat. Fifteen minutes is what is allowed in her elementary school. And she tries to sneak the food in her pockets because by the time she waits in line, there's just not enough time. And she gets a stomach ache and so Lissandra has been working like crazy. She's done hundreds of hours of research, looked at every state in the union, what is, what would be the best use of time? How could we do this? She's come to the school board, to the principal, to the superintendent, came to the state school board because they were saying they didn't have time. They couldn't give them five more minutes or 10 more minutes. And lo and behold, when they came to the state school board, we met with Marcia Judkins, one of the House of Representatives for that area, and we were able to solve some problems. And I think they're going to get their 10 minutes extra and that little girl's not going to have a stomach ache and can't eat lunch. That is the kind of wonderful work with parents who are committed and educators who are trying to solve problems and a state board who can go, hey, it really is possible. And this is important.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You're fine.
Sure, like I said before, I have relationships with many legislatures. The first thing that I did was worked on R277-328. I helped with the SEC in understanding what that meant and why it was harmful. I helped with removing CRT and helping with the HB 264 Equal Opportunities Initiative, which means that I spoke with Katie Hall, I spoke with Carrie M. Liz and B., and I worked with them to understand that not all minorities need to be saved. In fact, most of us would rather just have that ability to have our children learn that they can save themselves instead of having somebody else do that. I've worked on HB 29 sensitive materials. I have been a strong voice about getting sensitive materials out of our schools when people have said, oh, they should stay there because it's really important that black and brown people have representation, which I don't disagree with. But I do disagree when the representation means that we have to talk about kids in certain situations on buses. That is not acceptable. So I have built these relationships. I've even met with the governor and showed him what ethnic studies really was. And so once I showed him what ethnic studies really was, I got a call yesterday that said, Utah isn't going to touch it. And the reason they're not going to touch it is because I went from person to person to person in our legislature and explained what it really was because I cared that much that our kids are not being taught to hate.
Thank you.
I wrote a lot of what both of you put online and things, and I just have a question. You talk a lot about accountability. As someone who taught high school for 25 years, my husband is still a teacher in Mesa. I would like you to help me understand, what is your plan to establish accountability? Like, one, two, three? Because, one, I didn't have very many problems because of where I taught. Right, and I taught AP classes. My kids came to class, my kids, and I loved being a teacher and I was a pretty good one. But so was he, guess what? His kids, because where they come from. Help me understand. And I don't want to take much time, but as a parent and a teacher, when my kid had a teacher who wasn't teaching, I took the day off and sat in her classroom all this. And guess what? It changed. So help me understand what your, and your plan is to create greater accountability on students, on parents, on teachers, on administrators, when it comes to money, education, whatever.
Sure, let's first start, let's first start with getting rid of restorative justice. Restorative justice means that the kids are kind of, like again, I'm going to use that word, they're kind of coddled. They're said that, oh, because they've had generational trauma, they can't reach these standards. We have to show these kids, every single student, that they absolutely can, that they can do more. We need to expect more from our kids. Again, my background is the foster system. I aged out of foster care. This idea that we can't because we've had too much trauma in our lives does not help us. I know it feels really good to say, I'm doing so much for these kids. But the best thing you can do for those kids is have them look up, stand up, look in the mirror and say, I accomplished it. I was able to do it. A teacher helped me do it. Or a parent helped me do it. Or a foster parent helped me do it. But we have to, the accountability, first off, is that kid. We have to show the child that we believe in them. The teachers, they need to be supported. Thank you. The teachers need to be supported by their administration. There are lots of times when people, I have neighbors who have sent the kids out of the room because of bad behaviors and the administrators don't back them up. We need to be backing them up. So I think that the accountability has to come on the most local level possible.
Thank you.
I really believe in accountability. And I have seen what accountability can do in a child, in a teacher, in an administrator, in a parent. When you're accountable, you just feel good because you are accomplishing and you're moving forward and you can see the progress. You can see some of the problems kind of begin to fall away and you're able to live life a little more fully because you are accountable. A person without accountability is going to constantly be, you know, hitting against the pricks, having walls come up right in front of them, trying to figure out, how do I get around this? How do I get away with this? How can I ditch fourth period a day, you know, because I'm not ready or I'm not prepared? Accountability builds confidence. And I am so excited to continue to build each child with the help of parents. And sometimes parents want to, you know, push back a little bit on accountability because it requires time and follow through. And that is what's required from every teacher and every parent and every student that wants to be accountable and then enjoy the blessing and the rewards of accountability. I fully support accountability and we have been working and will continue to work to streamline ways that we can help one another be accountable to one another.
Thank you. I'm going to take one more question from the audience. I know there are many of you here and I'm sure both our candidates will be happy to stay and talk to you individually as well. This woman right here has had her hand up for a while.
Thank you. Janie Reddell, Path for Utah. And two years ago, I asked to remind Joe Carey to run for state school board. This year, I can't, and the reason, David, is that I'm listening to what you're saying and I think, all of a sudden, I think you're starting to catch on to some of the concerns parents have had. So my question, I'm going to do the Natalie Party question here. I was the biggest fighter for Natalie's kind of resign. However, I feel like her voice did not get heard and she was bringing up a lot of the concerns that now you're seeing, SEL and these other things. So on one hand, I think she crossed the line and she was inappropriate, she should have resigned. She's not going to continue. But this other part of me goes, she brought things to my attention and she tried to bring things to the school board's attention that I don't think her message was heard. So I just like to know what you feel in hindsight now on some of the things that she was trying to do.
I think that she brought up and continues to bring up many important, many important initiatives and issues that need our attention. In bringing them up, I would have hoped that she could have presented them in a way that would have welcomed input and feedback and interaction and dialogue between the peoples rather than saying, this is a problem and this is the person who has the problem, or this is the school, or this is the teacher. And that, you know, anytime that you're pointing a finger like that, even if it's a legitimate finger and it definitely is happening, is not perhaps as effective of affecting change as if I were to go to that individual, maybe in private with an administrator or with somebody who has, they have, that they have responsibility to, to help them see, these are concerns that are being brought by parents or these are, these are things that have got to be fixed. And are you ready to fix them? We want to help you fix them. And if you don't want to fix them, then bye-bye. But if there are legitimate concerns, let's solve them in a different way than just putting it on social media and hoping that everybody is going to, rah rah rah, we're going to fix this because that may not get it done quick enough to save this next generation of kids.
Thank you.
So if this would have been the conversation that we would have had for the last four years, I wouldn't be running. But it seems to me that sometimes views change when it's time for an election and things get said that have never been the support or the stance while on the school board. Now, when it comes to Natalie, I love Natalie. Natalie is a friend of mine. Natalie also made a mistake. So when people want to say, which they often do, oh, she's the next Natalie 2.0, no, the difference is, is that I understand if you make a mistake, even if, even if, and I'm not saying it's for sure, but I'm saying even if you are set up and you make a mistake, you still have to look ahead and you have to go, they're going to use it. They're always going to use it. Because we have, we live in a time of repressive tolerance where this side can do whatever the heck they want and this side can do nothing. And anytime this side even opens up their mouth, we will crush them. That's what I mean by hate craft. That's the reason that I'm running because we can't teach people to hate each other because this group says that you should hate this group. We can't do it. And we can't do it to our kids because it's psychological abuse. That's why I'm running. That's what I stand for and my views will not change between now and the next election.
Thank you. All right. I want to, once again, before we go to closing statements, I want to thank our candidates, Carrie Bartholomew, Randy Booth, thank you so much. And I want to thank again our sponsors and our great volunteers who made this evening possible. And most of all, I want to thank you, the voters, who have the initiative and the interest and the passion to come out here tonight and participate in this debate, whether you're here in person or online. Thank you very much. So we began this evening with Carrie having the first opening statement, so we will have Randy give the first closing statement. 60 seconds, thank you.
I have enjoyed this journey in education, in public education, and I continue to enjoy it. I have a track record of being kind. I have a track record of listening. I have a track record of caring for kids and for teachers and for administrators. I have a track record of caring about fellow board members, communicating with them, supporting them, listening, engaging in dialogue. I want to continue doing that and would appreciate your vote on June 25th. Thank you.
What was missing from that statement was parents. Parents were missing from that, from that closing statement. I am here to be a parent's voice on the board. I also work in education. I love kids. Anybody who knows me and sees me around kids knows that I love kids. I also love my country and I want American excellence taught. I want our children to not hate and want to dismantle our country. I know that this is the one place where you can come from nothing and rise up and be sitting at a table looking at potentially being the next state school board member from nothing. That's the message that our kids need to hear. And we need to work again to unite, all of us, the teachers, the students, the parents.
And charter schools.
And charter schools, absolutely, and charter schools and public schools and home schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.